We'll call to order the meeting of Morris Township Planning Board, April 4th, 2022. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the board in preparation of the 2022 Annual Meeting Notice, which sets forth the date time and place of this meeting and by properly posting such notice and forwarding this notice to those designated newspapers and persons requesting meeting notices. Moreover, in order to comply with the National State declarations of the emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic. I have this weird notice coming to my computer. And in accordance with the municipal land use law, the Open Public Meetings Act and Emergency Remote Meeting Protocols for local public bodies, this meeting is being held virtually on a web-based platform with remote public access. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And Jim will be our Sonya this evening. Now Jim, on a roll call.
Sure, Mr. Chairman Benoit.
I'm here.
Mike Dunn.
Here.
Mayor Joffrey.
Here, and George Quillen has his hand up, he's an attendee.
Linda Murphy.
Yeah.
George Quinlan.
He's in the attending.
He's in the attending.
Joe Veloso.
Here.
Kathy Wilson.
Here.
Tony Ben Order.
Here.
Jesse Flowers.
Here.
Jeanne McKay. Let's see, her in yet. Steve Warner.
Here.
Liz Ley.
Here.
Jim, it's George Quillen, I'm here.
Thanks, George.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, we have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Did you get yourself, Jim?
I'm sorry, what?
Did you get yourself?
I am here, yes.
You're here? Okay, great, thank you.
Felt it wasn't necessary.
First item on the agenda is a memorializing resolution on the Westburger application. Steve?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As we recall, this was the minor subdivision relating to Lot 41, 5 Edward Chippen Lane, two proposed lots. And the board sought lot area variances for both proposed lots, front yard setbacks for both proposed lots, and minimum lot width. As you know, we measured that at three different locations, and there were three separate minimum lot width at various locations deviations required. We did deny the application. I will readily admit, I had the number wrong. On page 32, I had it by a vote of seven to two denied. It was by a vote of six to three denied. My apologies for that. I'd ask that any motion to adopt the resolution include that revision. And I did notice a couple of items in the, what I call the voting matrix that need to be modified. X's did not necessarily fall in the right boxes, but we'll get that cleaned up so that it accurately reflects the vote of six to three denial. Otherwise, I didn't have any changes to my own resolution that I drafted, but if any of the board members do, certainly, we should hear them.
Board members, any recommendations, suggestions on the application? If not, a
Mr. Chairman, I just have one comment. I thought the resolution was very well-written, and I appreciate the time and expertise that went into crafting it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members' comments? Concerns? If not, I'll entertain a resolution on this resolution?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt with the revised vote tally of six, three.
Second that motion.
Motion by Wilson, second by Quillen, on a roll call.
Mr. Quinlan?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
And Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Motion to denial is approved.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Jim, do you want to give us some?
So this is application PB 16-21 for the Morris County Golf Club. It's block 9101, Lot 2, 36 Punch Bowl Roads, located in OSGU Zone. And the applicant's proposing upgrade to the maintenance facilities, and then also a new halfway house and administration building.
And before we begin, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I did have an opportunity to review the notice, found the content of same to be sufficient, found it to be timely served, certified mail March 18, published on March 20, both at least 10 days prior to this evening, so the board does have jurisdiction to hear and decide the case tonight.
Thank you very much. You want to call the attorney? Mr. Callie?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Larry Callie here on behalf of the applicant, Morris County Golf Club. Nice to see everybody this evening. I don't think we're going to take up all that much of your time, Mr. Chairman and members, on direct. We'll have a few witness testimony items to go through. I'm sure there'll be some board questions and some staff questions, but on direct, it's a relatively straightforward and we hope appreciable application. What I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is just briefly frame what we hope to do here tonight, let you know the three witnesses that you'll shortly hear from, and then we can go from there, Mr. Chairman.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you. So I know the board's very familiar with Morris County Golf Club. We've been here before on prior applications for other improvements to the club. Tonight is really no different. The club at 36 Punch Bowl Road is about 146 acres in size. Existing golf club, existing accessory structures, parking areas and the like, various improvements. Tonight, the applicant is trying to simply continue their thematic endeavors of modernizing, improving the facilities with new state-of-the-art equipment and facilities, all developed well within the belly of this very large campus, near the center of the property, as you'll see shortly. We trigger a few bulk variances, Mr. Chairman and members. Primarily, it's because of our setback when measured to the road, because we need a principal structure. And it's been agreed during prior applications and attack that the clubhouse essentially is our structure, which has a setback of several hundred feet. It's just under about 1,000 feet. So almost anything we do on this property is going to be within 1,000 feet of the roadway. Notwithstanding that, it's still significantly far back from the roadway system. Most of our developments and our engineer will walk you through them one by one, Mr. Chairman, and then Mr. Rooding will walk you through the actual structures themselves, the elevation of the interiors. But most of our proposed development is at least 580 feet or so from the nearest roadway, whether it's Punch Bowl or Old Turnpike. In some cases, we exceed 1,000 feet, 1,300 feet. And because these structures are considered accessory, we've got a top height limitation of 15 feet. A few of these structures are going to exceed that. Again, well within the body of this club, this campus, won't be any impact from a budding properties. You won't even see it. Nevertheless, it does violate the code, so we trigger some bulk relief along with site plan relief. And that includes other improvements like fencing walls and entrance columns, things like that, which our engineer will walk you through, and Mr. Rooding will as well shortly. I know that's very high level, Mr. Chairman, but there's a few moving parts here, all of which are in that same sort of category of limited accessory improvements for the betterment of the club that we think will not be any impact. In more detail, you're going to shortly hear from Dan Bromage on behalf of the Morris County Golf Club. Dan will walk you through sort of the genesis as to what brought the club here this evening with these improvements, what we hope to do and implement here, again, at sort of a high level. Tim Derrick is our Scrivener of Record from Langen Engineering. Tim's going to walk you through the site plan. It's a limited site plan because we're zoned in on this area of the property. That's an issue here. But Tim will walk you through all of these structures that are proposed, what the deviations are. He'll go into more detail, the numbers that I just sort of rattled off as to our setbacks from the roadway systems, and what the bulk variances are. It's relatively limited overall. Quantitatively, there are a handful, but I think the board will appreciate that they're limited in nature from a substantive standpoint. And lastly, we'll call Mr. Rooding. Jeff Rooding, as the board knows, is an architect. Jeff has designed the structures that are proposed, and Jeff will walk the board through exactly what's going to be located within these structures and what they're going to look like in more detail, tailing off of Dan Bromage's earlier testimony as to what we plan on doing in these structures. So that's our 123 this evening, Mr. Chairman. We'll try to be as reasonably expedient as possible, but we'll certainly cover all the ground we need to, to get the board's comfort level there.
That's great, thank you. Will you be having a planner speak?
We will not have a planner this evening, Mr. Chairman. The limited nature of the bulk relief, we think, sort of speaks for itself, and we think the board can certainly infer and imply that the impacts are in fact limited and variances warranted under the C standard.
Okay, thank you. And if there are any positive, negative criteria you want to expound upon, do so during the testimony then.
We certainly will, Mr. Chairman.
And in addition to that, we have three committee reports. We have the TCC report. We have the committee inspection report, and we received the environmental commission report today. Did you receive that?
We did, Mr. Chairman, and fortunately, we have no issues with that report. The early reports as well. We've seen the TCC report, and I think the other might be internal to the board, but we did receive the environmental commission report today.
Yes, it's internal to the board, but it does mention the stormwater, maintaining the stormwater management.
Certainly, and Mr. Derrick, our engineer, will certainly go through those.
Okay. That's great, then we can proceed.
I can swear everyone in, Mr. Chairman. If all the individuals who will be testifying, including our planner and engineer, will raise their right hand. Do all of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Do.
Thank you all. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Can you call your first witness?
Certainly, our first witness would be Dan Bromage on behalf of the Morris County Golf Club. Dan, you were just sworn in, but for the record, can you please state and spell your name and provide the board with your affiliation with the club?
Hi again, Dan Bromage, B-R-O-M-A-G-E. I've been the chief operating officer at Morris County Golf Club for 18-plus years now. Just giving you a quick, you know, overview of what we're presenting this evening, a little bit of history. Morris County Golf Club was established in 1894, the oldest golf club established by women in the country. So a little piece of neat history for you. With that being said, the club has resided in the township for over 125 years. You know, obviously, that's pretty neat too, but with 125 years, at least, it needed improvements that are necessary from time to time. And this golf course maintenance facility is well past its useful life at this juncture in time. So, you know, after about a year and a half or two years of contemplating and planning, the improvements over several years internally here at Morris County Golf Club, engaged Jeff Rooding and Langen Engineering back in January of '01 to kind of hone in what we're looking to achieve here, you know, to better, to better the facilities. So I think the project's been, you know, certainly vetted and thoroughly considered, you know, so we were prepared to bring something in front of in front of everyone tonight. In terms of like the operations of the club, you know, this, you know, the changes that we're looking to get approved tonight, the operations are not going to change. The same hours of operations will remain the same, the same number of employees will name the same. Well, there are no change to our day-to-day routine, it's just really, you know, a physical plant that's beyond its useful life, and we're putting up a new, a new facility basically in the same area. You know, there's three main reasons why we're doing this tonight, and one, one is in our top priority is that better working conditions for our employees. Our second is we're adding a carb troll system, which Jeff Rooding will get into a deeper dive into, that will be able to let us, allow us to conserve water. And the third is to have proper indoor storage for what is now very expensive equipment. So, you know, 50 years ago, you, you know, it's kind of like you see when you go in Pennsylvania, you know, lawnmowers just sitting out in the fields. I mean, now everything's computerized and everything else, everything needs to have a home. So it's just a different, different world in terms of, you know, upkeeping of pieces of equipment. Our proposal, obviously, like Larry, I think, explained very well, it's kind of in the middle of the, middle of the golf course. So, you know, the impact around the surrounding area is really minimal. And that's all I think, you know, I want to thank everybody for their time. I'm excited for the process. You know, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, but at this time, I would just hand it over to the pros.
Thank you, Dan.
Any board members? Questions for this witness?
Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Quillen.
I'm not sure whether it's for Mr. Bromage or for Mr. Callie, but we board members received in our packages a set of seven prior approval memorandum, resolutions of the planning board going back to 1998. And I wondered why that was, whether that was perhaps in response to a comment from the TCC asking whether there were any prior approvals that were still outstanding. In other words, things that have been approved that hadn't been built out yet.
Right. No, no, I can explain that question. As a matter of, I think, prudent policy, whenever an application's filed anywhere in the state, we always file it over to get the benefit of the history of that site, so the board can have the entire picture before them. There was no reason other than to give it full context of the history of this site. There's nothing from a prior approval that is out of whack or a condition that remains unsatisfied, nor any that we're seeking deviations from at this point. That's merely the background packet that goes along with every submission in every town that we file an application in, if there is site history in fact on file. And with this applicant, there have been several prior development proposals and approvals.
Anything that's still is potentially active that has been approved but hasn't been built out?
Not to my knowledge, but you know, your township staff would certainly know the answer better than I. I can tell you there are no open notices of violations or non-compliance orders out there. I know that for certain from discussing that with my client. Again, the resolutions are provided for context, nothing to do with anything other than the fact that it provides you with the site history.
Mr. Chairman, can I jump in on that for a moment? Please, just two things real quick, and I apologize for interrupting Board Member Quillen, but number one, I consider the best applicant's practice, if you will, so I commend Council for doing that with all Council's applications. Number two, I take it, Mr. Callie, that the applicant will stipulate that to the extent conditions of prior approvals are not inconsistent with any conditions of what may be an approval this evening, they would comply with all outstanding conditions of approval, correct?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. And I, my interruption is over, Board Member Quillen.
That's fine, and thank you for helping me, and I have no other questions. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other board members? None? Any members of the public which does questions of this witness? Seeing none. Mr. Callie, would like to proceed with your next witness.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you, Dan. Our second witness will be Tim Derrick. He's our project engineer from Langen. Tim, you were sworn in, but would you mind giving the board the benefit of your qualifications and background in the field of engineering?
Sure. I have a BS in civil engineering from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, and I've been civil engineer in Jersey for over 20 years and hold a license, have held my license since 2007.
And you prepared the plans of record that are filed with the board, is that right?
I prepared them, yes.
Mr. Chairman, we'd offer Mr. Derrick as an expert in the field of civil engineering to testify as such this evening.
No objection.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And shortly, Council, we're probably going to mark one item this evening that the board did not have in their printed packet, but we did advance a few days ahead per the DLGS guidelines over to Sonya, and that's just an aerial to give the board a little bit of a sense as to the size of our property, what's on it, and where we're developing. Everything else I think you're going to see this evening was a previously printed filed document, none of which is going to be mocked up in color. If anything does deviate, we'll let you guys know as we go there so we can market accordingly. But shortly, I think Tim will present to the board that aerial and we can market when we get to it. Tim, if you would, you heard my proffer to the board, you heard Dan's testimony as to the goals and why we're proposing these accessory improvements. If you could take the board on a tour, a brief tour through the existing club, and then we'll start focusing in on the areas of improvement, and then we'll call out the deviations, if you would, Tim.
Sure. Let me start by sharing my screen and a couple exhibits. So, starting off here, this is an exhibit that's a plan that's part of our plan set. It's the overall site map and tax lot plan. It just, it's a simple plan showing the surrounding tax lots and the club's property, and then the project's orientation as part of that site.
Can we just get the last revised date on that?
It's it's, it's all dated 2/24/2022.
Thank you.
And I guess, as you can see, per this page, Project North is paged up. The maintenance facility is located in the middle of the property. St. Elizabeth's University is to the south. It fronts on Punch Bowl Road to the south as well, an old Turnpike Road to the end, and a railroad to the west. And then, you can't see it on this map because it's mostly tax maps, but the Prescott Road runs through here. Maybe it's appropriate at this point for me to flip over to the aerial, aerial map that we've prepared, it's kind of a little more descriptive. It's a
This, Tim, was not submitted as part of the printed package, I believe, is that right?
No, it wasn't submitted, but we figured, we thought of painting a better picture for the board to understand where the project is and what exists on site.
And it does, but well, let's just mark it for a moment. So it's a Langen plan entitled Area Map, Aerial Map dated
3/31/2022.
Very good. Steve, okay if we mark this as A1?
Not only okay, preferred, thank you.
You got it. Thank you. All right, Tim, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Sure. So as I say, Punch Bowl Road is to the south, Old Turnpike is the left, there's a railroad running through here as well. St. Elizabeth is here, Prescott Road, and then residential properties to the east. The project itself is located generally right, pretty much in the center of the property, the clubhouse, as you can see, which creates the variances we'll talk about later, is over, is on the east side of the property, kind of sitting back from Punch Bowl Road and accesses off of Punch Bowl Road and the adjacent Delaware Road and the residential properties. One other little bit of work as part of this application is there's some entrance improvements that are proposed along this driveway, which is internal to the club's property. The overall lot located in Morris County is approximately 146 acres, and this, in the project area, is a little, is just about three acres. The site is zoned, open space, government use, OSGU. And as I said, the current access to the clubhouse is by private driveway here, but the existing access to the maintenance facility is off of Punch Bowl Road by a driveway that runs through the course. There's no proposed changes to this driveway. Existing buildings on site are the clubhouse, there's a pool facility here, and then all, then the maintenance facility, which encompasses several buildings. It's probably, at this point, I can probably zoom in to to this, to the project area where you can see, this is the existing shop building that will remain. There's an existing cold storage building. There's a small existing halfway house here, along with a cart storage building and material bins. These are just kind of open covered bin where they can store sand and other loose materials. Adjacent to the, adjacent to the project is an isolated wetland. At this point, I guess we can move back to our plan set and go to our site plan. So as part of the work, the shop building is, will remain and be renovated. The cart storage building, which is located here, will be relocated to this location. The cold storage building is proposed to be demolished, and the halfway house is proposed to be demolished. And those both will be replaced with a new halfway house, will also function as an administrative building and a new cold storage slash kind of fueling wash down and carb troll area. There's also an environmental building, this environmental building will be demolished, and the, and the material bins that are here will be reconstructed to better condition. The entire, and that's generally the entirety of the improvements in this area, as well as associated parking. Which brings it to the point, the existing, there's no striped parking existing within the maintenance facility. As part of this project, they'll provide 23 new parking spaces, which is per code in order to add the square footage for this facility, which is 2,000, 1,055 of additional gross floor area would generate the requirement for 22 additional parking spaces. So we're providing an additional parking space than what is required. As per your code, cold storage facilities do not generate a requirement for parking. So the car storage, the cold storage area, and it's really just the halfway house, which is an administrative facility, which is generating the parking requirement. To note though, the entire facility, golf course facility, is underparked per code. There's the requirements, you require about one per 100 square feet plus additional two parking spaces for driving range practice tees. Existing on site, there's 219 parking spaces, and per code, you'd be required to have 616 parking spaces. For the clubs, they're operating with their existing parking as is, and they haven't experienced any issues and don't propose to add any, any new facilities or uses that will create additional demand. And so we'll be requesting the parking variance from the required.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask one question at this, out of order, so it's a big thank you. And maybe Mr. Callie can answer. Mr. Callie, it's my, my understanding, though, that the existing parking deficiency was previously approved by the board as reflected in prior resolutions. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Warner.
Okay, so there's no exacerbation of the parking deficiency per the testimony. It's actually, in essence, providing 23, whereas only 20 further are required, correct?
Right, exactly. The delta of prior approval to current proposal is just about zero. It's not an intensification. That's absolutely right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I guess, and the final point as part of this work, as part of this project is, for the site plan wise, if there are existing trees that, that needed to be removed as part of this, this plan, and I guess, and a permit was previously obtained to remove trees within this project area due to some, the limitation on removing trees due to the presence of Indiana bat. And I get, and at this point, I'll kind of go through what the variances are. As we, as we described, the, in this zone, there's no, there's not, the bulk variances are are kind of left to the discretion of the board. But there is a requirement that the accessory buildings can't be any closer to the road than the principal building. The principal building being the, being the clubhouse, which sits just under 1,000 feet from Punch Bowl Road and 2,800 feet from Old Turnpike Road, creates, creates a need for a variance for the new and existing buildings.
And you know what, maybe the aerial might help too in a moment after you zone in on this, to give the board a little bit of a sense as to where we are on the property and exactly how far we are from each different setback.
Sure. Just to get, to note on your plans, there is, there are dimensions that we've Sure, I'll just forget, to, to note on your plans, there is, there are dimensions that we've called out for the. Distances from the building, buildings to the surrounding roads, just for your reference, but. Per kind of, to Mr. Cali's point. The setback is requirement is based on the location of the clubhouse, which is sitting here, so obviously. These buildings are sitting internal to the, internal to the site. Based on the existing landscape and topography. There's no noticeable difference from the surrounding properties, so there's not, there's not a, there's, there's negative, there's no negative impact by. Any of these changes.
And if you could, for the record, Tim, if you could just call out the proposed setbacks. For each of the structures, and after we do that, we'll discuss briefly the heights.
Sure, so. Going through the existing shop building, which is to be renovated, is located six hundred ninety feet from Punch Bowl Road. And approximately fourteen thousand eighty feet from Old Turnpike Road. This, the new cold, cold storage carb troll fueling and wash down building is seven hundred and ten feet. From Punch Bowl Roll Road and fourteen hundred eighty feet from Old Turnpike Road. These, these are approximate dimensions. The cart storage building is six hundred thirty feet from Punch Bowl Road and fourteen hundred feet from Old Turnpike Road. The halfway house and administrative building is eight hundred and twenty feet and from Punch Bowl Road. And fifteen hundred eighty feet from Old Turnpike Road. And the covered storage building is five hundred eighty feet from Punch Bowl Road. And one thousand three hundred and thirty feet from, from Old Turnpike Road.
I'm sorry, the last one was one thousand, what?
Three, three hundred and thirty.
Okay, and the, what was the second building? I thought, I had that as a new car storage?
Uh, there was the existing shop building, then there was a. That's here, the exist, the proposed cold storage carb troll and fueling and wash down building. And then there was a cart storage building here. Halfway House and administrative building, and then covered storage.
I'm still having a problem, you, yeah, a new car storage and. I have existing shop building, new car storage, then car storage building, am I missing something?
If the cold storage building is part of, uh, it, it's called Carb Troll, it's a, it's a water wash off station. Which is, which is connected to the cold storage.
The cold storage car troll building is the second one, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I thought you were saying car storage, it was cold storage, I got it now, thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, no problem.
Oh, Ti- Tim, before we go over the heights now, just from, from a numerical standpoint, you're testifying solely as an engineer, but. The setback requirements of the zone and setbacks in general, I think, are intended to protect proper open space. Structure volume, massing, uh, streetscape congruity. The numbers you just referenced, looking at it on this plan. Are we sufficiently setback notwithstanding deviating from the code here? So that we do not and will not have massing, volume. Streetscape incongruity issues with our abutting property owners, given the location of proposed development.
Yes.
Now, before we move on to the structure heights. You heard Dan's testimony that we're not changing operations at all, it's essentially a net zero change of operations, this is. An effort to modernize, improve, and, and even implement some eco-friendly developments. In your opinion. Is this consistent with the existing operations on a club such that. Where we're locating this on your site plan, there wouldn't be any negative impacts from our neighbors, whether it be acoustics. Odors, daily operations, anything like that, given the location on this property where we propose to redevelop, if you will.
Correct, there'd be no, there'd be no negative changes from, from existing operations.
Okay, um, moving on now to the other part of our relief, Tim. Which are structure heights, and Jeff Rooding, we'll get into this in more detail. When he provides the board with the benefit of the elevations and the utility of these structures proposing. If you could just call out where we are deviating, proposing to deviate from the fifteen foot top height. Accessory limitation, uh, which structures and where, and what our proposed top heights are, please, Tim.
Sure, so just by the nature of the limitation of fifteen foot building heights. The, the size of these buildings are just going to create. Buildings in excess of fifteen feet, so the existing shop building is as measured per, per your code. Which it takes into account the existing, uh, proposed grades. Uh, it's twenty, twenty point four feet tall. The colds, this, the proposed cold storage carb troll feeling and wash down building. Has a height of twenty-four point seven feet. And the halfway house and administrative building have a height of thirty-one point six seven feet. And then the covered storage building has a height of eighteen point nine feet.
So these are all lesser than what you would see a, a standard single family residential height allowance of thirty-five or so. But they exceed the accessory limitation, so again, I'm going to ask you, Tim. The location of these structures on the property, are they such that exceeding the top height is going to be visible and or cause any impact? To the abutting property owners that vary between six hundred feet to over a thousand feet beyond us on this hundred forty-six acre site?
No, no, it will not.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry again to interrupt, but, um, what, so one of the five buildings is not in excess of the fifteen foot. Accessory structure height limitation, is that correct?
Correct, the cart storage building.
Okay, thank you.
So the last item, Tim, I want to go over before we turn you over to questions of the board and their professionals. Is we're proposing some other nice improvements, if you hear, some other amenities, and you mentioned them earlier, the columns. The walls, if you could briefly just describe those, um, we filed the landscape architect plan. Uh, if you could just, you know, reference what you see on that plan, the board might have some questions, they might not, and. We can just maybe call out the location again of these proposed improvements.
Let me quickly just go back to the aerial, aerial plan, just to locate you. So there's also some additional improvements the club is proposing at this internal entrance. On, off their internal driveway to their club. It's a, some landscaping and columns as depicted on, uh, drawings provided to, to the board. Uh, it's, it's a, a set of columns and landscaping located near their driving range, if that, if that helps you. Includes some proposed cobbles, it, columns, and, and landscaping. And you can see the different views of what they anticipate.
You're referencing the conceptual plan for entry pure area, not for construction is the title from the. Distinctive design and management dated November sixteen, twenty twenty-one.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, so, Tim, the, the, the final question I have on this is. There are height limitations for these types of structures and. They've got to have some level of transparency, right, they can't be fully opaque. These are not, so as an engineer, my question to you is. Will these developments, if approved and if developed, interfere with any site distances? Or create any type of safety issues for whether someone walking or a passenger vehicle coming by and through these structures?
No, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't believe so, there's setback from the intersection down there.
Okay. Uh, Tim, you had an opportunity to review the environmental commission's memo, I think it's dated March fifteen, twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
Any issues with compliance with their recommendations, I believe. A lot of the recommendations already were responded to in the resubmitted plans, but I, I'd like to turn that over to you for a moment.
No, we don't have any issues with any of their comments, uh, some of their comments had to do with submission of a tree removal plan and a. A landscaping plan, both of which been, have been provided.
Okay, so no issues with compliance with that, okay. Tim, at this point, uh, we'll, we'll turn you over to any questions of the board or consultants, Mr. Chairman, we'd make Mr. Derek available to any questions you folks might have.
Yes, please, so we can proceed with, um, one member questions, any boards, four members wish to, Ms. Murphy.
Sorry, I have to unmute, um, I just want to verify that the, um. Additional twenty-three parking spaces that you're adding here in the center of the course. Are essentially for employee parking, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and they did not exist previously?
They did not exist as stripes parking spaces currently.
Okay, but employees park there just on in-stripe parking spots?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Quillen?
Thank you, can I be heard?
Yes.
Hold on one second. I wanted to ask a question about the, um. About the height of the buildings that are there now. You gave the heights of the buildings that are proposed to be constructed, but, uh, what are the heights of the buildings that are there now? In particular, what's the maximum height of, of, uh, the buildings that are there now?
I, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but based on recollection, I believe the existing shop building, which is to remain is the. Is pr- is probably the tallest building. The cold storage building is probably of similar height, though. They're all one, one-story metal buildings.
So it's probably about twenty feet tall?
Uh, the, the existing, the, the renovated shop bill, the shop building is twenty point four feet tall. So, yeah, this, if any, this building, I, I don't know the exact height, but it's similar, similar height, maybe slightly taller, slightly shorter.
I was surprised to learn of the existence of any buildings in this area at all, uh, it's funny, I've, I've driven. Punch Bowl Road so many times, I've driven past that driveway that is the access point to, to these buildings. I was completely unaware that there were any buildings in there. Um, I've walked Old Turnpike Road many times. Uh, is there any place from, from the surrounding roadways where you believe the existing buildings are, are visible from? The clubhouse, of course, is on high ground and is visible. From a number of different directions, but I get the impression these buildings are on much lower ground, is that, is that true? And, and are they visible from anywhere?
I, I don't know if they're visible from anywhere, from the surrounding areas.
You know what the elevation of the ground is there relative to, to Old Turnpike Road or, or Punch Bowl Road where the driveway comes in?
I'd have to, I'd have to look that up, but it, this, this, this pro- this site, the project sites higher than Punch Bowl Road. I'm, I'm going to say by, but, yeah, I'm going to say by ten feet, but that's a little, a little bit of educated guess. I can pull up, I can find and not, find the exact elevation if you want to know.
Okay, um, and then, uh, could you indicate again, you said there's adjacent wetland? Uh, and I, I missed where you were indicating where that wetland is, can you indicate where that is, is it off?
It's, it's on this, over here, this, this line. This line. Here is the wetlands line. It's an isolated wetlands, you can see the opposing side.
Okay, is there any restriction that you're subject to, to, uh, to stay a certain distance away from the wetland?
There's a, there's a fifty-foot wetland transition area, uh, we will be encroaching on that, and we would do, and we will be filling a portion of the wetlands. Uh, this is subject to DEP approval, which we also will need for this part of this project work. Uh, a wetland scientist from Langen has been in contact with the DEP, and we have had a pre-application with them to confirm. That the developmental, development plan, uh, fits within their permanent guidelines.
Okay, and are you working on, or have you considered a plan B if they, if they turn you down? Would you have to move these buildings to the, to the left on this diagram by a few feet?
We wouldn't anticipate that right now, the, the general limit of disturbance, disturbance of this project is with, is within. Previously, previously disturbed, uh, wetlands transition area. So I get, our belief is the worst case scenario is that the, the buyer attention basin that's proposed. May have to get shifted outside of the wetlands area, but that, that wouldn't change the general layout of the, of the, of the facility.
Okay, and then my final question is kind of a silly question, but I'm curious, what is a cold storage building? What, what, what are you, what is the golf club?
It's not, it, the only reason is your cold just remain, refers to the fact that it's not heated. It's where they store their mowers and other supplies and other equipment, it's just a big heat, unheated, uh, building.
Thank you, thanks very much, that, that was all I had, thanks.
Ms. Wilson?
Thanks, I had to unmute, um, and I had this similar questions that were already asked, but just a couple others. Um, are, are you going to be providing any further testimony on the landscape plan? Or just reference it, like?
I would, I can reference it and discuss it briefly, if, if you like.
Um, I just had one, uh, question or point about that, I, I noticed on the landscape plan that I had. That it referenced in, uh, one or a couple of locations that you were planning to put Norway spruce in. And I just want to highlight that we have been making available to applicants. Uh, a document that our environmental commission has created, do not plant list is what we call it.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I guess I'm asked, it, it, it's a, it's a voluntary list, it's not mandated, but. I, I guess I would ask that you, uh, take a look at it, and the Norway spruce is one of the. Um, plants that's requested not to be planted, so there are, there are alternatives listed in there. And I would, um, ask that you take a look at that list, I'm, I, I'm not sure, maybe Jim knows. Have, has that been sent, I guess it has not been sent to the golf course, right? I'm talking about the do not plant list.
I'm not aware that's been sent to them.
Thank you. So can we send it to them and request that we read it and comply with it?
Perhaps the environmental commission can, uh, send it to them or send it to me and I will forward it to them.
Okay. Okay, um, one question about the, um, the aerial picture that you showed. Um, the internal entrance to the club. Ends, um, where it, it doesn't go, it, it's, it's well. How far away is the entrance to the club from Punch Bowl?
We're, uh, to the, are, are you talking about the entrance to the clubhouse?
Yeah, you're putting, you're putting the, um, improvements at the, at the driveway entrance. Right over here, right, that you showed. Yeah, so the, the, the road that comes in front of that, that, that. That is not owned by the golf course, correct, the golf course property begins where the entrance that you're making some improvements on. Begins, is that correct?
Uh, the, the club, the club owns, owns that property.
Owns the road?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that, I didn't know that, I thought that was, um, okay, I appreciate that clarification. And also, I would just like to ask for any comment you may have on, like. Uh, has, has any of this work been, like, has, has it been started already, any of it?
The only thing that has occurred is, is some tree removals.
Some tree removals over on the. Where your cursor is over there.
Yeah, for the maintenance facility.
Pursuant to a permit, Tim, just to be clear.
Pursu- yes, sorry, it was pursuant to a, a tree removal permit that was submitted by, by the club.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Ms. Van Rutter?
Thank you, thank you very much, I, I just had a.
I, I just had a quick question and it could just be that I, I was having a difficult time hearing some of the words, uh, or, or just distinguishing numbers. So I, I think I heard you say, and I, I completely understand that the club has, um, a, of, of, of a parking deficiency that's already been approved by previous planning boards. I, I get that concept very well. Um, I understand that this additional square footage that you're adding is triggering, um, a, a number of parking spaces, uh, uh, slightly less than what you're proposing, so uh, to be, to just understand, the, you had said that they're required per code. I, I wrote down six sixty, but I was wondering as I heard it, did you say six sixteen? Or did you say six sixty?
I said, I said six-one-six.
Thank you, okay, so I was, uh, not hearing that correctly, appreciate that. And, uh, just to clarify, two-hundred-and-nineteen exists. Uh, there are these informal, uh, not, non-stripe, uh, spaces that will become formal. Uh, twenty-three, I think you said, for a total of two forty-two, is, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you so much.
Uh, any other board members? I have a quick question. Jim, do you need to, um, look at or approve this, the, um, base storm basin?
Yeah, I have a few, I have a few questions related to, uh, stormwater management.
Okay, great. Is that part of the TCC report? Related to that?
It's, uh, outside of the TCC report.
Okay, do you want to proceed then?
Sure, uh, you know what, um, Tim, can you just give us a basic overview on the, uh, you know, what's proposed as far as stormwater management goes first? And then I can, uh, I'll ask my questions.
Sure. So, this is our, our great, our grading and drainage plan dated two-twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two, CG one-on-one. The existing site, the, the site has a, has a, a drainage divide located approximately in the middle of the project area. Due to that, we've kind of, the system uh, has two distinct drainage areas. One that drains down to a buyer retention basin on the, on the west side of the site. And another one, another drainage, another buyer attention basin on the west side of the site. The buyer attention base on the west side of the site collects mostly, uh, surface runoff from the parking area, parking and, I guess, maintenance area. And will provide, uh, what are quality, quantity and recharge i- in, in the base, in the buyer retention basin. The buyer retention basin to, then to the north, e, to the northeast will provide, uh, quality and quantity, uh, requirements. There's a small underground infiltration basin that will provide the remaining, uh, recharge requirements, bulk of the recharge requirements that for this area are provided, for this project provided in the basins here, to the, to the west. There's a series of catch basins and, and roof leaders that bring all the water down into the, into the individual basins.
My, my questions, well, you know, first question relates to the emergency spillway. Um, you know, I'm, uh, I didn't see any type of stabilization. Is the, uh, grass sufficient to, uh, would be considered stable for emergency spillway flows? Is that something that was investigated?
I, I'll, I will, I will need to confirm that.
Okay, and if not, if stabilization is required, you're willing to, uh, install that as part of the project?
Yes, of course.
And, uh, I, I note on your details for the outlet structure, it's a, a box-type rack, um, for the, uh, for the low-flow orifice. Uh, my recommendation would be some type of sloping trash rack, you know, that design should be modified in order to help facilitate maintenance. And then also, a, uh, on the top of the outlet structure is a, uh, you know, cast iron, essentially a uh, catch basin casting. And my recommendation would be going to, uh, an aluminum-type grate. I, I can give you detail on that, but, uh, it helps facilitate maintenance where, you know, a, a man can just open that zone as opposed to needing a machine uh, to, to open that. And, uh, I did note that there's, uh, some trees and planting in the embankment. Uh, you know, we would consider this to be a dam and the, uh, the planting, you know, on that, uh, embankment would be limited just to, uh, prevent root, root intrusion. Um, as the, are you willing to stipulate that that, uh, landscaping would be modified so it's not, uh, you know, in the, in the damn portion of the, uh, stormwater management facility?
Uh, yeah, we don't have a problem with modifying the landscaping. I may like to have a conversation with you to make, confirm uh, what plantings you, you, are appropriate or where you're considering this to be a dam uh, as well. The, this is, it's only two and a half feet deep, but, uh, that said, we don't have, we don't have any issues with adjusting the landscaping per, as you require.
And the, uh, last item I had is, uh, as a condition of approval, assuming, uh, approval is granted on this application. Um, we need a, an operation and maintenance manual, manual, and also a stormwater access and maintenance agreement. Is the applicant willing to provide that as a condition of approval?
I, 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 we have it prepared, so that's not a problem. I thought it was submitted with our package, but we'll, we'll provide the operation of maintenance, maintenance manual.
Okay, thanks. And the, uh, you know, I have a question related to the, uh, washdown area and that may be something that, I don't know if that, you can answer that? Or is that something that would be more directed towards, um, Mr. Rodding? Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious if there's like a recycling system that's going to be installed as part of that?
Uh, uh, Mr. Rodding can answer all the, all the questions associated with these buildings, but yes, there's a recycling system.
And the, uh, last item that I had was a, uh, as a condition of approval, can you provide us a, a site triangle layout for that, uh, entrance gate, just to ensure that there are no, um, you know, side obstructions for the intersection, you know, by the main entrance where the columns are proposed?
Uh, yes, well, we can, we can come up with some exhibit.
All right, thank you. I have no further questions at this point.
Uh, Jim, are they required to have any kind of, um, solid removal or skimming facilities?
Uh, were.
For flow from the driveways coming into these catch basins?
So there would be regular maintenance, um, to clean out that, you know, if there's sediment and stuff that's washing to the bases, is that where you're throwing it in?
Yeah, where the oils, yeah.
Um, you know, I don't, you, are you providing anything for any type of oil separation or where does that type of maintenance go on? Where there would be, uh, you know, changing oil and mowers and that sort of stuff? Is that inside the, uh, maintenance building?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's all inside the, the cold storing, fueling and washdown. Uh, I think Jeff can go into the design, uh, Mr. Ron, he can go into the design of, of those facilities a little better, but I think you, he can, that, that, when he describes the building, you'll better understand how it functions.
Okay.
Okay, actually, I was thinking of oils on the surface of the driveways and stuff. I don't know whether that's required or not, or just try to throw it out there.
Typically not required, but, um, you know, the detention bases would filter that stuff. Sometimes we see some site plans where there's some inserts in the catch basins that have some, um, you know, oil separation or, or collection.
Okay. And how about, um, tree replacement? Is this the right witness to talk about tree replacement?
Yes.
Um, does it meet the township ordinance?
I'll give the short, yes, and you can elaborate on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let me, uh, we have, and within our set, we have a we ha, we have a copy of the tree removal plan, which includes the calculations. This is, this was submitted as part of the the true removal permit application, uh, as shown, there's, there's twenty-four trees to be removed and additional eleven specimen trees uh, using, using the requirements of, of your tree removal code that requires seventy replacement trees, which we then show on our landscape plan.
Are you searching for a waiver for evergreen versus deciduous, or this is all deciduous?
Is there, I guess, I, I, is there a quiet question? I guess that's a question from, I have. Is there requirements to not use deciduous or evergreen trees as replacement trees? We, I didn't read that in the, the tree replacement requirements.
Generally, we replace what's being removed. I think there may be a couple evergreen trees that are being removed, but, uh, you know, if you want to provide a breakdown, I know that, uh, your landscape plan does propose both deciduous and evergreen trees.
Yeah, we, I guess, I don't, I don't believe the club has an issue with one reviewing, if we have to review the, the no, the no plant list and as well as the requirement for matching general, general tree type, not specific species, uh, we can, will review and revise as necessary.
Okay, thank you, um. Ms. Lainey, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I just have a, a few questions, um, that, just from the TCC report, um, dated January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, that I just wanted to go through, um, to have the answers on record if they haven't already been addressed. Um, and starting, and this perhaps is for the next witness after Mr. Derek. But, um, point number two on page two of the TCC report says the applicant needs to meet with the building department to veri, verify sprinkler requirements and code compliance issues. Is, is that really a question for you, the architect?
Yeah, yes.
I believe that was done, but Jeff will speak to that shortly.
Okay, fine. Um, then, again, this, again, number four, the TCC advised the applicant to meet with the fire department to determine where hydrants should be located. Uh, is that a question for Mr. Derek or the architect?
That, that was me. I had a conversation with the fire department and located, and we show, we show a fire hydrant per their request.
Okay, great. And, um, the other thing, point number six, uh, the TCC advised that the applicant to confirm that there'd be no variance needed for retaining wall heights. And I, I noticed that there is no indication on your site plan that you need a variance, but I just want to confirm that.
Uh, we do not need a variance for retaining wall height.
Okay, and then I think, uh, the next one, point eight. Uh, oh, this is, uh, depicting the regulated wetland and transition area, and you, you did do that, I saw that. Um, then number nine, um, and again, this might be for the following witness, but the TCC advised the applicant to confirm and provide documentation to the building department that there are no open permits associated with any prior development approvals. Yeah, and I believe you testified to this already, but I just want to verify.
I think, I think, I, I'm not sure Tim can confirm that. Jeff Rodding will be able to, though.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, those are all the comments I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Kaplan, do you have, between you and Steve?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll put up these, uh, questions to members of the public who may have questions. Any members of the public wish to ask questions of this witness? None. Mr. Call, do you want to introduce your next witness?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Tim. So our final witness this evening, Mr. Chairman, will be, will be Jeff Rodding. I know he's testified once or twice before this board in the past, but Jeff, for the record's sake, would you mind, uh, confirming that your license remains current and good standing as an architect in the state of New Jersey?
You're muted, Jeff.
Still muted, Jeff.
How's that? Better?
Gotcha, we gotcha.
Okay. Yes, my license is current.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Chairman, we could certainly award the ear, Mr. Rodding, further, um, or the board can accept his qualifications as a licensed architect. That's how he'll be testifying this evening.
No objection.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Jeff, you heard, you heard Dan's explanation and the story as to what brings us here this evening for these much-needed and desired improvements for the club, club. Tim brought everybody sort of on a tour around the lay of the land of the club that we've got today on this hundred-fifty-acre site. Uh, if you would, Jeff, maybe go in a little deeper into these structures, showing the board what they're going to look like. Um, comment on whether or not we think we're going to see them from a budding properties. Not that that's a bad thing, if you saw them, but the expanse of property, I think, is such that they're going to be pretty much dwarfed, notwithstanding the quantity and size of these structures.
Yeah, uh, if I could, uh, get my, uh, screen shared here, that'd be great.
You've granted access to screen sharing.
Thank you, Mr. Slate. Let me know if it comes up. Uh, let's try this again. Trouble is the way the size of the screen, it shuts out my, uh, hats, assets, my drawing. All right, here we go.
Got it, Jeff, thank you.
Can you see that? Okay, sorry about that. Um, is that note near the middle of your screen too that says stop sharing? No.
No, just, I think, just you see that, Jeff.
Okay, you can see it, okay. All right, uh, but before I onto that, let me just answer the couple of questions that are out there, so I don't forget them. Uh, we have gone into the, uh, uh, the building department, spoke about the, uh, need for sprinklers. There is no need for sprinklers on this project due to the size of the buildings and the types of the buildings. Um, we, uh, also dealt with a number of, uh, what the, the, the building department thought were open permits. Uh, a lot of it was administrative, uh, filing issues, and I think we're, we're at the bottom of it. I believe there's one more to go, uh, that, uh, we're aware of and is going to be satisfied, and the building department is satisfied that we have taken care of it. Uh, so, or we are about to take care of it, but so there's only one open issue there. Uh, no, no issues, but just an open permit that they're working on. So, uh, we're, we're, uh, we're looking at, uh, essentially four buildings that we're working on and one that we're relocating. Uh, and to be clear, I think Mr. Warner was calling the, uh, the one building a car building. It's actually a golf cart building. And it's just a storage component. That's the small building that, uh, Mr. Derek showed on the, uh, on the lower left-hand side of his site plan. And immediately to the left of that was a, a plan, uh, for material bins. Um, for those who don't know what material bins are, essentially, it's a, it's a shed, uh, that allows them to put, uh, golf course material, product, sand, uh, for the golf course, uh, soils and, and the like in a, uh, storage component. It's dumped, uh, by a truck and it's kind of, it, it's segregated into, uh, different materials so they could use it on the golf course. Uh, it's a rooftop structure, uh, to protect it from the weather. And it's a three-sided, each, each of these bins is three-sided, and that allows it to, uh, stay segregated. And, uh, as you can see from this drawing here in front of you, this is in your set, by the way. Uh, the drawing here in front of you, we're proposing five bins. There is material bins on site now, but they're in a little bit of a dilapidated state, as, uh, Mr. Bromage has said, uh, this is an upgrade of, uh, what we have presently. And, uh, it's, uh, you'll note on the upper left, uh, there's a cross-section on the plan here that shows it, um, cut into the hill. So it's, it's a very unobtrusive, uh, element. The, the, the bulk of what you see from the golf course side is really going to be the, uh, the roof, uh, you know, uh, rather than the building itself. And the building is, as, as I said, accessible on the, only the one side and open air. Uh, this happens to show the cart storage building just to the immediate right of that as well. I'll move to the next one. Um, I'm going to skip this one, it's only a foundation plan. Uh, the, the, the next building, um, that I'll talk about is our combination halfway house uh, administrative building. Presently, there's a small halfway house, uh, on the left-hand side of the site plan, uh, that will be replaced by, uh, essentially this, this building. Now, this building is combining both the halfway house activity and, uh, the administrative aspects of the superintendent's, uh, staff, um, which is presently located in the shop building, which was the existing building that, uh, that, uh, Mr. Derek talked about that is going to stay and be renovated. The renovation of that building is essentially to move the, the, uh, administrative offices out of there and move them into this new building. And then just take the area that they vacated. And then just take the area that they vacated in the shop building and, uh, they use that for more storage. So it, it's, this is an upgrade of what would be the, uh, staff's, uh, 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 space, you know, new locker rooms, uh, new break areas, uh, office space for the super and the assistant superintendents. Uh, I, I showed you the one, the one plan there was the lower floor. Uh, this, this building too, you'll see by the elevations in a minute, is kind of stepped into the hillside. Uh, the lower part of your, your page here is, uh, on the, uh, maintenance yard side and the upper part is facing the golf course. The upper part has the, uh, has the, uh, halfway house in the middle and then the lower part, uh, has the break rooms and the locker rooms and the like on, on the, on the backside, opening up to the bottom of the hill. Then on the second floor, uh, there's the superintendent's office access by way of the stair here. There's an assistant superintendent's office, a bathroom, uh, the super's office and another bathroom. These are all under roof, uh, so they're, they're more or less, uh, in keeping with the style of the main clubhouse. So, uh, this sheet here shows the elevations of the building. Uh, the upper left shows you the side elevation. You can see where the grade changes there. Uh, so the right hand side is the maintenance side. The upper side here is the halfway house side. And the, uh, the elevation to the right of that is the, uh, facing the halfway house. There's access to the halfway house internally on left and right, and then there's a members bathroom, uh, proposed on either side of that. So anybody coming off the ninth hole, uh, has the ability to use the bathroom or get a bite to eat and then continue on. Uh, these upper dormers are actually in the, uh, the superintendent's office up top, which is under this roof here. And then going to the lower left, this is the elevation that you would see on the maintenance facility side or the driveway by the maintenance facility. Uh, between the, the halfway, or the admin building and the cold storage building. And then this is the opposite elevation, uh, cutting into the hill. Uh, as, as we said, that, that, we gave you a height of, I, I, I think, uh, Tim had mentioned, uh, thirty one some odd feet. But that's really from the lowest elevation to the highest point, uh, of the ridge here on the maintenance side. It's, uh, uh, quite a bit lower up on the, um, on the more visible side, I'll say. And, uh, as we were talking before, I realized that, you know, some of these buildings are actually a few feet lower than the, uh, than the fairway that, uh, uh, butts it. So they are also down in scale when it comes to that, uh, from a vis- uh, uh, visibility standpoint. This just shows a cross section of the space. You can see how it's kind of tucked into the hill and there's a four foot, uh, four some odd foot differential, uh, between floors here. Then, uh, moving on to, whoop, skipped, moving on, hang on. Uh, this is the existing shop building, we call it. Uh, this is, this is the one that is remaining. Uh, essentially what we did was lower, the, the right, the left hand side shows you, uh, a plan with all the offices and alike, uh, uh, running around the perimeter. We've taken those out. That's the administrative area that I said was relocated to the halfway house, uh, superintendent's building, uh, that we just showed you. Uh, and what's happening now is that we've brought this all back, uh, this is the existing plan, uh, the proposed plan to the right. We brought this all back to, uh, the maintenance shop and some storage, uh, for additional equipment to get, uh, out from the cold, more or less. And that building is, uh, on the exterior is not changing. So, uh, that is the most evident building you see from, uh, Punch Bowl. And there is a little limited visibility of that from Punch Bowl, although there are some mature trees, uh, between it and the, uh, in the roadway itself and two fairways. So it's a, it's a, a pretty good distance off the road. This, uh, this, this last building I'm going to talk about is the cold storage building. Uh, um, essentially it has three components to it. One is, uh, about, uh, two thirds of this building is what is known as cold storage, which is essentially, uh, equipment storage that doesn't need to be in conditioned space. Uh, so it's, uh, it's, uh, mowers and tractors and, uh, the, the things that they don't want to keep outside. Uh, right now, the, the existing cold storage building is in rough shape. It's rusted, it's dented, it's, uh, it's, uh, on its last legs and it's undersized for what they need. So this is a, uh, essentially a customized pre-engineered building that we designed that has access from, uh, pretty much all sides to allow accessibility to any of the equipment inside. So we're, you know, nothing's like, you know, have to move twenty pieces to get to the, uh, the mower that you want or the, or the spreader that you want. Uh, everything's pretty readily, uh, accessible. Uh, and then about midpoint here, and I'll show you in a plan shortly, uh, it's, uh, we'll call this the environmental area. And then at the far end, uh, there are two, uh, essentially, uh, drive-through, uh, bays, uh, ala a gas station. And I'll, I'll, I'll talk about that in a minute as well. Um, these are either end of the building, this, uh, one on the, on the right here shows you that, that, um, that, uh, fueling areas, uh, fueling and wash bay area is what it is. Is, uh, wide open, uh, to the, uh, to the, uh, elements, but, uh, with the exception of a roof over the top. And then, uh, this is the, uh, other elevation that faces the halfway house, uh, side of the, uh, the, uh, plan. And let me, uh, I skipped over the plan for a minute. Um, so here is the floor plan of that building. It's, uh, six thousand square feet of cold storage, another twenty four hundred square feet of what I'll call, uh, environmental. And then, uh, these open wash bays here and fueling bays. So the way this works is the, uh, equipment either in the morning or after, after use, uh, would come into, uh, these open bays. There's, there's, uh, the ability to, to put, you know, four or five pieces of equipment on both sides of the, uh, of the aisle here. So they could be, uh, washing it down or fueling it, uh, fueling the equipment, uh, from a fuel tank here. It's a split fuel tank above ground, uh, what they call a convault system, which is a, uh, so I, I think it's a thousand and a thousand gallon, uh, split diesel and, uh, and, uh, regular fuel. And, uh, they use a hose, they fill up their equipment, um, and/or if they're washing down, there's a wash down component over here with power washers and the like. And they wash off all the, uh, the, uh, fertilizer or whatever's on the equipment, grass clippings and everything else. And that is all collected. There's a drainage system that's part of this wash bay area. That's all collected in that drainage system. Uh, this is kind of curved area too, so it's all contained within here. And that, uh, all gets recycled through us, through a recycling system in this little portion of the building here. Uh, the system that we're using is a system called Carb Troll. I think, um, I know Jim's familiar with it because we're, we proposed it for Springboard Country Club as well. Uh, essentially, it's a state of, state of the art, uh, piece of equipment that, um, uses carbon to filter out all the impurities, uh, in this recycled water. Uh, they have a, uh, limited, uh, a, a limited amount of water use that they just keep using over and over again. They recharge it, uh, when, you know, through evaporation, you lose some, so they recharge it. But that water is filtered through these filters. Um, and the beauty of the Carb Troll system is that actually if there happened to be a little bit of an overflow, when you're filling your, uh, your, your mower up or wherever on the fuel, uh, the carbon actually cleans out the fuel, uh, as well. So it go, it all goes through the same system. Uh, so it's a very, it's a very complete system and it's a state of the art system. Um, so environmentally, uh, like every other club, uh, that's not up to speed, uh, with the environmental aspects of, uh, th- this is not mandated, by the way. This is a voluntary thing to upgrade state of the art, but, uh, there's a lot of clubs that'll wash, uh, just open air and, and, you know, essentially the grass clippings will go where they may and whatever's on the mower goes where they may. Uh, that's a common practice in a lot of golf clubs. Uh, these guys have taken the, uh, the, the step to really upgrade their, uh, environmental, uh, stewardship. So, uh, the other, the other aspect of this is, uh, uh, a chemical mix area for, uh, fertilizers and the like. It's a system that, uh, you know, uh, premixes, uh, stuff and they, there's a, there's a central location here that'll, that'll, uh, allow them to fill their sprayers. And again, that's tied to the filtration system as well. So if anything is, uh, overflowed or spilled, goes back through the filtration system. And then this upper area on the top here is really just storage, palletized storage for the chemicals and the fertilizers and the like that have to be, uh, used into the, uh, in, into the mix system or used in the spreaders and, and, uh, spread on the course. Uh, so this building also has a, uh, a proposal for, uh, a, uh, interior mezzanine over the center here that could add another couple thousand square feet, excuse me, of limited storage. And when I say mezzanine, it's really for, um, you know, items that they'd only use often that they would forklift up on top of the mezzanine, uh, just to save some, uh, physical floor space. Uh, so it's not, it's not a mezzanine for occupancy. It's a mezzanine strictly for, uh, storage of, uh, materials that they don't have to get to on a, uh, regular basis. Uh, uh, that's my direct, and I'd be happy to answer anybody's questions.
Okay, board members, any quick questions for the architect?
Yes, thank you. Um, I just had a quick question to understand better on the total square footage of the proposed cold storage structure, which I understand has more than just cold storage in it. So you, you'd mentioned six thousand square feet, twenty four hundred for environmental. I'm taking that to mean the, the, um, carb troll, carb troll system that you described. But, um, in the aggregate, what is the, um, what is the total square footage of that structure?
So, so we are, it, it, we are sixty four, I'm sorry, eighty four hundred, uh, in these two areas here, which is the cold storage and the environmental. And then another twenty four hundred open air, and then we have another two thousand, uh, of, uh, mezzanine storage. So, you know, you're, uh, what did I say, six, twenty four, forty eight?
I can add those.
Ten thousand eight, your ten thousand eight hundred internal space, uh, of floor area and then the open, the open base.
And, um, in the, the structure that's currently there that you described as dilapidated and, you know, out of date and no longer functioning or, you know, not repairable. Clearly, it's understandable that the applicant wants to, um, upgrade these structures. I'm just wondering, as a comparison, what is the size of the current? The current structure that needs this need?
Yep, that building is six thou- is, is six thousand square feet cold storage. So it's basically this, this, this portion of the building here. Um, this component is a new component that, uh, the environmental portion, so that's additional. And the, uh, mezzanine is additional, but we've also, uh, picked up a little bit more space in what I said before that re- remodeled shop building. And that was, uh, that was needed as well because, uh, presently, uh, what Mr. Derek said, um, or actually what, uh, uh, Mr. Bromage said is true. There's a lot of equipment now that doesn't have a home. It's sitting outside and we need more physical space to bring that equipment in the building. Not only is it, uh, you know, kills the, the, the life of the equipment, it's also not something that's, uh, you know, you, you really want to look at from the golf course either. You know, so they want to, they want to really clean it up visually as well.
I understand. Thank you. That, uh, thank you for that explanation. Um, I, I, I listened carefully to the Carb Troll, uh, filtration system explanation, which was quick and I'll need to probably Google that a bit. Uh, it's very interesting and I'm, and I applaud, uh, the applicant's decision to make the upgrade to this sort of system. I'm also just curious, what are they currently doing? Or what have they historically done to wash away, to wash this equipment, um?
They, they have a wash pad. Yeah, they have a wash pad, outside wash pad that, uh, goes into a sump, uh, where they collect everything in a bucket and they take it off, which is better than most because most just let it fly onto the, uh, onto the, uh, the, the open ground. So, um, I think that, uh, that they're, they're, uh, not a, not a bad offender. Uh, but they're going to improve themselves quite a bit with what they're proposing here.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate your answers.
No problem.
Thank you. Any other board members? Mike Two would like to commend you on the environmental aspect of this. Um, I think it's really very important and it's, it's nice to know that applicants out there are thinking about these things and really seriously considering them. Um, I'll move to, um, professionals. Jim, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Uh, Liz?
No, no questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and I apologize if this was already covered. Uh, I'll direct it to, uh, Mr. Rodding and counsel. Um, the T C C memo December three, did we, uh, either stick to everything or already covered, one through nine? Yes, we, uh, we, we agreed to all of it. Okay, thank you. And, uh, so then specifically with respect to the environmental commission's memo of March fifteenth. Uh, I take a yellow stip if you haven't already to, uh, continued, uh, maintenance and inspection as of the stormwater management. Yes, yes. Thank you. Uh, and, uh, the additional landscaping, the native species recommendation in the environmental commission's recommendation, is that something you can agree to? Larry?
Yeah, yeah, I believe, I believe it is, Steve.
Okay. And, uh, no rooftop solars on anything? Done proposed. Space and water heating. And no electric space and water heating? No. Okay, just wanted to get the clarification there. Thank you. And, uh, I don't have anything else. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. And we open up more questions to members of the public. Any members of the public have questions for the architect? None. Um, Mr. Call, you don't want to, we're just?
W- w- we are, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank the board again for your time this evening. Relatively straightforward application for a permitted use that's been here for quite a long time. A lot of thought and effort went into these plans. This has been ongoing for over a year that Mr. Bromage secured and, um, uh, asked Mr. Rodding and Lang and Engineering to prepare these plans and comport with the goals of the club. Lot of eco-friendly and state of the art improvements, which are always a good thing. They're gratuitous here, but it's wonderful. The net change to the club is zero. No intensification of operations. The limits are these accessory improvements, which are well within the confines of this extremely large property with the setbacks measured in several hundreds of feet, if not, uh, north of a thousand in certain cases. We think that there's certainly no negative impact here, uh, and we think it's nothing but upside for modernization of this existing permitted use on the property and township. And again, I want to thank the board for your time this evening, your staff. Always wonderful at getting us through T C C, getting us to the borough, the board, notwithstanding this difficult virtual format. I want to thank you again for diligently getting us to the hearing. I know the applicant is very appreciative as well.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we go over the stipulations?
Uh, certainly, Mr. Chairman. First, the relief sought, as I understand it, and anyone and everyone are welcome to correct me where I'm wrong. Uh, the preliminary and final site plan approval and bulk variance relief, there are five identified accessory structures that technically are in the front yard. Uh, do we open it up to the public for comment?
Not for comments. Very good.
Thank you. Uh,
That's why we have a vice.
Thank you.
Our vice chair.
Our vice chair. I slipped, as did the chair.
As did the chair, but I opened it up for questions for the witness, but not for.
That's why we have a vice chair.
Should we interrupt and do that now?
Please, please don't.
So let's do that. If any members of the public have comments on this application. Please feel free to raise your hand and uh, make comments. What's where you're in? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment period. We can resume with Mr. Warner's.
Uh, now that the, uh, there has, it's been confirmed there's no public comment. Uh, preliminary and final site plan approval, bulk variances as follows. Uh, five buildings were identified as accessory structures that are technically in the front yard in that they are in front of the principal building, the clubhouse. Uh, the various, uh, uh, dimensions, or excuse me, the various, uh, uh, distances from, uh, the right of way were set forth. Uh, four of those five buildings, uh, are accessory structures that exceed.
Four of those five buildings are accessory structures that exceed 15 feet in height and the various heights were given. There were also some columns that constitute fences within the front yard that are in excess of 3.5 feet tall and more than 25% or less than 25, more than 25% or less than 25% opaque? Jim?
They are more than 25%.
More than 25% opaque. Thank you, Jim. And technically, we, there continues to be a variance required or a new variance required for the total parking spaces, even though they are closer to conformity perhaps than was previously approved. There's still a deficiency in the number of parking spaces, 242 total proposed versus 616 total required is the delta. And the new parking spaces as were the old existing parking spaces, I believe, continue to be nine by 18 as opposed to 10 by 18, which is what our ordinance what our ordinance requires. I believe that is all the relief that is sought. Anyone wish to correct me?
I had one other item. There's a six-foot-high fence that would still be considered in, in front of the primary structure. I mean, it's a technicality, but you know, one of the fences that's I'll say facing Punch Bowl Road. It's, it's still over 600 feet back from Punch Bowl Road, but technically it's in the front yard.
Okay, so then that would be another accessory structure in the front yard being added to those five buildings that were identified, correct him?
Correct.
Okay. If that is all on the relief, then that is all on the relief. And the stipulated two conditions in addition to items one through nine in the TCC memo and the first two items in the Environmental Commission memo with respect to stormwater management, maintenance and inspections and native species for landscaping would be the continuation of the obligation of the applicant to comply with all stipulated two conditions in prior resolutions to the extent same are not inconsistent with this approval, if it is an approval. And I do not believe, but again, anyone and everyone, correct me. I do not believe there are any other conditions of approval that were independently raised or stipulated to tonight. With one addition, John.
Actually, several. There's a emergency spillway that you agreed to stabilize if necessary. There's a cast iron grate that's going to be replaced with aluminum grate. And there's an embankment with landscaping that's going to be revised to secure the embankment only, no root intrusion. There'd be an operation manual for stormwater management and access agreement. An exhibit for the site triangles on the access road. The washdown area will include a recycling component and a solid waste removal component. And I'm sorry if I'm repeating the environmental, but the trees are replaced one for one deciduous with deciduous, evergreen for evergreen. And all open permits will be closed prior to approval being finalized, to the extent not already closed.
Mr. Callie, did we add anything that you think was not stipulated to? Or did, feel free to let us know if we missed anything.
No, I appreciate you asking. I have all of that captured in my notes as well and, and those are all conditions the applicant's amenable to undertaking.
And I have a few more. I mean, some of these are kind of technicalities, but provide a sloping trash rack, trash rack for the low-flow orifice. We will provide the, the no-plant list to the golf club and that'll be reviewed and checked. Copies of the LOI or any wetland permits will be provided as, as they are obtained. And a sanitary sewer connection fee will be required in accordance with ordinance requirements. And that was the last items I had.
Still no objection, Mr. Callie?
No objection. I'm running out of paper though to write the condition.
We have a Franken attorney here. We have a three-headed attorney monster that with all these conditions. So that, that is what we have. In the event it's an approval, Mr. Chairman, if it's a denial, there will be no conditions. But it's for the board hopefully now to deliberate and vote. And we do have how many members? Nine? I lost track. Do we have nine? Had it at the beginning. I believe we have nine board members, so five out of nine for passes.
We have nine. Board members, any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lesso?
I'll make a motion that we approve this application based upon the resident, excuse me, stipulations that were steps stated by our, our council and the rest of the three-headed monster.
This is Linda Murphy. I second that motion.
Second, and Miss Murphy, on the roll call.
So start with Jesse Flowers.
Yes.
Any event order?
Yes.
Kathy Wilson?
Yes.
George Winland?
Yes.
Linda Murphy?
Yes.
Eric Dorfry?
Yes.
Michael Dunn?
Yes.
And Chairman Benoit.
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Callie.
We have a vice chair.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a wonderful night, guys. Appreciate seeing everybody. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
We have to, we missed, we missed the vote.
Sonia's substitute missed Mr. Lesso. We have one more person to vote.
Yes.
There we go. And since he made the motion, that's important. Not 9-0, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for the applicant.
Thanks again. Good night, folks.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Okay, we do have a little more business, Mr. Chairman?
You have number, item number seven. Other matters. Kathy's or?
Yeah, I have a quick statement. The League of Municipalities held their first in-person legislation committee meeting last Friday, which I did attend. And the, the one topic that was discussed in a couple of the different subcommittees that is relevant to us is what to do about non-electric vehicles parking in EV parking places. So there were a couple of different bills brought up. There, there seemed to be, there was not a consensus. One of the bills that my subcommittee worked on, they were generally in support of the notion, but opposed to the penalties that were part of the bill. So I, I, my sense is that this will be a topic that will be will come up and may come up in our town as well. So that is my report of the, of that meeting. And I will say also just briefly that we are plugging along on getting our sustainable Jersey certification and there will be some legislative items coming to this board for, for your consideration. We don't have them before you tonight, but they're coming pretty soon.
Will these be resolutions that we need to adopt?
Um, yeah, most, most, a few, yes, the, the, yes.
So the, the sustainable Jersey requirement for for.
There's a number of different actions. I was just giving you a head up, heads up. There's a few different land use related actions that some require a resolution, some will just be kind of an FYI requiring us to fill out a checklist by us, I mean, the green team. So this is the first time we've ever applied for certification and there's various forms of documentation that are needed and various pieces of information that will we need to share with different boards.
Kathy, this is Linda. I just have a question of you, if I may.
Yes.
Is there any way that you can share in advance some of the sustainable New Jersey certification criteria? Especially how it would apply to the planning board or perhaps the board of adjustment in advance of our
In advance of the meeting?
Yeah, in advance of our meeting or in advance of our discussion so that people have an opportunity to kind of look at it and, and try to understand it.
Yes, yes. I, I agree. That's important. And our first time through this, we're kind of feeling our way on what the sequencing is. We have before us right now a sustainable land use pledge, which which is going to be, come before the governing body and then will be shared with the land use boards. So it's I don't think the planning board will be meeting again before this comes before the township committee. But your point is well taken, Linda. We're, we're, we're kind of, we're going through this on the first time and kind of struggling a little bit with how to structure the sequencing of things.
Thank you.
How does it work, Kathy? If we missed an application, you can apply again next year?
Way it works is that there's, the, the initial requirements, we, we have to submit our initial application materials by May 22. But then they review it. They, Sustainable Jersey reviews it at their end and they get back to us with feedback. So then we have a chance to revise again and submit again in August. And then there's a second opportunity for revision at our end. And the, the final sort of, you know, drop dead date is November. So we are reasonably sure we should be able to get everything done by November. There are things that we will not have finalized by May, but we can notify Sustainable Jersey that we're planning to work on it.
Yeah, just if I may, I'm sorry, another question. This is Linda. I, I don't know what kind of criteria are involved in getting a sustainable New Jersey certification, but is this something that perhaps we should seek public input on?
There are various opportunities and requirements, as a matter of fact, for public input on certain of the actions. So for example, one of our actions that we're working on is to before, by November or before, have in place a complete streets policy. And there are various requirements along the way to obtain public input on that. And so that's one of our bigger actions and it's running, that's being handled through the transportation advisory committee. But different, you know, what I, what I can send, I can send to the board a list of the actions that we're undertaking, if you, if people would be interested in that. There, there, the categories that overlap planning board interests are land use and transportation and natural resources. And then there's another category on community outreach. And I can, I can send you an overview of the actions that were planning to apply to get, you know, to get to create documentation for, if, if that, if people would be interested in that. It sounds like you would be, Linda.
I think, I think I would be, yes. And, and particularly as it relates to transportation and you know, and why you and I've been working on another horse issue regarding that. So, thank you.
Perhaps you could send that to Sonia and she could distribute it.
The one thing I will say is that sustainable Jersey has, is, isn't just an, it's an incredible resource. There's so much background information about how to undertake the various actions. And I, I consider that to be one of the most valuable aspects of this program is when you apply for the certification, it requires you to use their resources and the resources are helpful in showing you how to do what you're trying to do. But we're going through it for the first time, so we're, you know, we haven't worked through all the bugs before.
Are there, are there certain benefits we get from being sustainable or is it like a feel-good thing?
Um, the process of getting certified, you know, there are certain things like from, from afar, we say we do that, but when you kind of dig into it to, 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 you know, to comply with the certification requirements, it does require certain improvements. And I just, I think it's a good thing for us to do. It's not just feel-good. It's improvement in our practices with guidance from an organization that has a lot of experience around the state and with other municipalities. I think there are more than, what, about 250 plus towns that are certified through Sustainable Jersey.
One, one last question, Kathy, if I may. Is, is this a certification process that it's once and done or is there an ongoing certification requirement?
Um, you, you do it and then I think it's like two or three years later, you renew. But certain of the actions are a kind of ongoing, you know, and when you reapply in the future, you have to renew. It, it will definitely be easier in the future because we'll have certain things, excuse me, in place that we can just draw on again. We're, we're starting with no documentation right now. So, but yes, it, it can be renewed. And honestly, as I work with this, there are lots of things we do that we could get points for. What we're trying to do, the green team, we're handling the documentation and we're trying to proceed with kind of minimal impact on our professionals. We're very mindful that people are really busy and have a lot on their plate and we're trying to not make any excessive demands on anybody's time, but at the same time, keep people informed on, on what we're doing. So we're trying to balance that.
Okay, thank you. Um, should we move on? Do you have more, Kathy, or?
No, that's it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I had a quick update.
Mr. Mayor, yes.
Um, I think last meeting or the meeting before I gave an update that we were searching for a second sponsor to our 21-day notice legislation in the state senate. We have secured that second sponsor, so it is now a bipartisan effort that is being introduced in the state senate and we will have further details on that. And hopefully the next month or so. Trying to garner support for the bill's passage and an introduction in the state assembly. So we crossed a major hurdle, actually having the bill introduced in the state house and we will do everything we can to support its progress there.
Impressive, thank you. Should we move on, resolution?
If there's nothing further with the legislative committee report, yeah, the last other matter is resolution for stormwater management consultants for a particular matter.
Yeah, so there was a resolution that, grass resolution that was circulated to the board members and it was for retaining Joe Scoop and you may be previously for some stormwater management projects in particular. He did work on the Honeywell redevelopment. And we're looking to bring him back to help with the stormwater management review for the zone change to allow the Red Bulls on that Honeywell site.
And that's only if I understand correctly, Jim, at the point of a site plan application, which is down the road, correct?
Correct.
Board members, any questions, comments?
I have a question, but it's not related to anything we've covered so far. Can I ask a separate question? I have a question, but it's not related to anything we've covered so far. Can I ask a separate question?
Is it related to this resolution, or do you want to make it later on?
No, it's not related to anything we're discussing right now.
We should, we should just adopt, uh, adopt.
Adopt a resolution and we'll go to other questions.
If, if that's okay.
Can I get a motion on this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Second? I'll second the resolution. On the roll call, Jim?
Your Jesse Flowers?
Yes.
Any Ben Order?
Yes.
Kathy Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Joe Lesso?
Yes.
George Quinlan?
Yes.
Linda Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Dorrifry?
Yes.
Mike Dunn?
Yes.
Chairman Benoit?
Yes. Great. Ms. Murphy?
So I don't know if this has to be discussed in closed session, so I would ask for Steve's advice on this. Has to do with Florham Park.
Oh. And a particular site that straddles Florham Park in our township, which is, as I understand it, the subject matter of litigation?
Yes.
That would be executive session. It's not a litigation involving this board, but it's litigation that I'm aware of involving the township as a whole. So if there's anything to be discussed, I would certainly want it to be an executive session.
Do we, do we have anything else? Do we have anything else in open session that we have to cover?
Only public commentary.
And, and the only thing I would say is, for member Murphy, is there a reason why it would be appropriate to discuss in executive session for this planning board as opposed to the governing body? Since the planning board is not a party to that litigation and currently has nothing involved with that.
I have, I have a relevance question to Florham Park and Harding.
I defer to the chair. If we want to go into executive session, we didn't we, we have, we have executive session available on the agenda, so.
We can do that. So why don't we first open up to members of the public for any public comments they may have on anything pertaining to the planning board, but not related to the applications that we discussed this evening. Being no hand raised, I will close public comment period. And I want to take a resolution to go into
Yeah, we just need a, it would be a resolution to go into executive session under the exception number seven of the Open Public Meetings Act, which provides for attorney-client privileged communications as well as specifically privileged and confidential discussions regarding pending or anticipated litigation. This, I believe, would be pending litigation. At least related to pending litigation. So it is a, a, an acceptable exception to the Open Public Meetings Act. And any information discussed during this executive session, when it can be released, would be released after it's no longer required to be maintained as privileged and confidential. That would be the motion. If the board wishes to make a motion second and a roll call vote on that resolution, then we can go into executive session, exclude the public and discuss the matter.
Okay. Do a resolution for that purpose.
That resolution.
Motion by Linda.
I will second.
By Mr. Lesso on the roll call.
Do it all in favor or you want to roll call?
Uh, do roll call. It's a resolution, please.
Jesse Flowers?
Yes.
Tony Ben Order?
Yes.
Kathy Wilson?
Yes.
Joe Lesso?
Yes.
George Quinlan?
Yes.
Linda Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Dorrifry?
Yes.
Mike Dunn?
Yes.
Chairman Benoit?
Yes. Okay, so we have to
So any members of the public, we ask that you drop off the Zoom because we're going to go into closed session.
Is that there? Why don't you just ask them? I got a great guy. Vice Chair, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
No, 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 no. We have to discuss what's coming up at the next meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Eighteenth, April eighteenth meeting is the Savage Minor Subdivision and continuation of the Anna Management
Which one will be first?
We always run with what was carried, so Anna Management will be first.
Okay. The chair, chair always has the discretion to override them. It's bad, so.
That's April eighteenth.
Do you want to be the next meeting, Jim, or?
The next meeting, nothing is currently scheduled.
Ah, okay, good. And if you'll do the Anna Management second, I'll be able to, I'll be able to sit on the first half. I won't be able to sit on the second half.
All right, I'm sorry. So, so, so eighteenth, which two applications are there?
We've got the Savage Minor Subdivision and the Anna Management continuation.
I'm not available. I have to recuse myself from the Anna Management.
I'll see if we can do that second.
Mine, that way I can stop in.
On me. Any objections to that?
I think that's how you're going to do it anyway.
I like it too because I'm recused as well.
Okay, so we'll do that.
Okay, oh. Can I make a motion to adjourn now?
Well, who else would you?
Check my notes. Second, that's you may.
But the chair, the chairman? The chairman's back, so he'll call the roll call.
Well, we already made the motion. Who seconded it?
I second.
Chief Dunn.
Chief Dunn, want favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Okay.
We did it. Go Kansas.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.